All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 20, 2024, a regular city council meeting. Call the meeting in order. Madam Clerk may have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Please join us for silent prayer and flag salute. Next agenda item, replays statement, Madam Clerk, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, August 23rd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 24th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetrolCable14.
Thank you. Next agenda item B, council any agenda approval addition or addition. If they are none, we can move the next agenda item presentations. Number one, subject Galt Community of Character Coalition Respect Award. Thank you.
My name is Ralph Cortez, representing the Galt Community Character Coalition and presenting tonight's award. Janice Barsetti Gray is a true asset to the Galt community for a multitude of activities she has led and participated in to benefit and energize our community over the years. Presently, Janice runs a very successful winery along with a loving tasting room and gift shop which serves as a hub of sorts for our Galt community. From free live music events on the patio to bongo nights, it's a happening place. Years of friendship with Janice brings to mind her countless examples of warmth and respectful interaction with others. Janice is always kind, considerate, and helpful in the most respectful way. In addition, Janice demonstrates respect in how she devotes countless hours to the various communities committees on which she serves, most notably as president of the Galt Area Historical Society. Showing respect to others, to the community, and for the history of our great American little town, the qualities Janice constantly demonstrates. Janice Barsetti Gray is hereby presented with the Galt Community of Character Coalition 2024 Award for Respect nominated by Mark Edward King.
Thank you, Ralph. And we all know what Janice, she doing lot of thing for the community. Congratulations, Janice, you get that award. So next agenda item is C2, Kiwanis Donation. Mr. Solis.
Yes, Mayor and City Council. I believe we have representatives from the Kiwanis Club and the audience that will be coming up to speak to you regarding our dog park donation and our Gora Aquatic Center donation that they've provided to us.
Good evening. My name is Liz Schmal and I'm the current secretary for the Kiwanis Club of Galt. The Kiwanis mission and vision is to empower communities to improve the world by making lasting differences in the lives of children. Kiwanis strives to be a positive influence in the communities worldwide so that one day all children will wake up in communities that believe in them, nurture them, and provide the support they need to thrive. And our club does just that by focusing on the children and residents here in Galt. Tonight, I'm here to recap two items where our club recently partnered with the city of Galt to benefit the community. Our first item includes a recap of the Kiwanis Days at the Pool program for 2024. Our club has made this an annual event for over a decade now by partnering with the city of Galt's Park and Recreation Department. We select specific days in July, June, and August to cover kids' entry fees to the pool. Recreation Supervisor Monica Lopez coordinates with the pool staff, promotes the event on the city website and now community calendar, and sends us a final count and total for each weekend. This year, the club sponsored a total of 487 kids for a total amount of $3,293. And we have this lovely big check. Our second item tonight is to present our $10,000 check or donation to the city of Galt for upgrading the Monterey Park Bark Parks. Our club has been proud sponsors of the Kiwanis Bark Parks since the park was built. Last year, we approached the city Parks and Recreation Department and worked with Director Armando Solis to explore options for upgrading the park and what it would cost. Armando helped us obtain estimates, and we then approached the city council to request help to fund the project. Armando and Aaron have done a wonderful job keeping us updated throughout the project, and we are here tonight to present our $10,000 donation as this project is coming to a close. We look forward to the city completing their final improvements and are planning to host a grand reopening bark park event on October 12th. More details to come in the future weeks. The Kiwanis Club of Galt thanks the city council members, city parks and recreation staff, and all their hardworking teams who support our events. We truly appreciate your partnership and look forward to working with you for many more years to come. And if we can, we'd like to get a picture.
And I would like to ask the council if anybody wants to come to the picture.
Before you go, on behalf of the city council and the entire city, we'd like to thank you very much for such a generous offer and all the hard work you do. What a wonderful impact on the community. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Any other council member wants to make?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the pool thing you do because we have an agenda item tonight where we're kind of discussing ways that the city could possibly provide certain youth opportunities for sports, you know, free of charge. And I know it's very complicated to be able to do that sometimes, but I think I love the fact that you, we have an organization in town, and you're one of many organizations in town that do, you know, great things that make this town great. But the fact that you guys are leading by example, and I would like to see the city follow that example if we can do that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all the Kiwanis Club. This is, donation is more than $13,000 and is going to the community. Thank you. Thank you again. All right, moving along, the next agenda item is C3, Public Safety Committee Annual Report for Physical Year 2023-2024.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I will have Chair Reed come forward from the Public Safety Committee. And as per Section 2.95.100 of the Galt Municipal Code, provide the annual Public Safety Committee report. And as you know, Mayor Sandu sits as the council representative on this committee. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, other city council members, and everyone from the public. My name is Tim Reed. I'm the chair of the Public Safety Committee, and so I'll give an overview, like the chief said, of this last year's Public Safety Committee stuff. First, the purpose and the function of the Public Safety Committee is to advise the city council on public safety issues within the community. It evaluates concerns brought by the city council, city staff, or residents, and makes recommendations to the council. The committee focuses on the general public safety, excluding internal city operations such as the police department. Topics include traffic safety, special events, emergency operation plans, and other issues that have to do with public safety. Our committee, which is comprised of five voting members and several non-voting members, met bi-monthly from the time of July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024. This last year, we held three meetings in July, November, and March, and we had to cancel three meetings in September, July, and May. Two out of those three meetings that were canceled, all three of them were because the lack of availability from the committee members. Two out of the three of those also had to do with the one vacant spot that we had on the committee at the time. Other updates that came out of the meeting, in July, we talked about public works and parking restrictions at Liberty Ranch. The fire department gave us an update on staffing, retirement, grants, and their telehealth system. And then the police department offered us up some updates on burglaries and several other things that went on. In November, same thing, the fire department and the police department gave us updates. The fire department was call volume and response times and coverages. The police department went over police statistics. And then in March, it was the fire department and public works. The fire department went over their recent new promotions and their recruit academy, and then the opening of Station 77 in Elk Grove. And then the public works reviewed the C Street construction and the new traffic that has to do with that construction. The committee remains dedicated to addressing public safety concerns and ensuring that relevant updates and information are effectively communicated to support the info and inform the city council. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reed, for giving us all the information on the safety for the last year. I just want to make the comment, even I'm on an advisory committee, no voting member on this committee, but this committee working hard. Our main purpose to get the information from the community or ourselves if we see anything unsafe in the city. And we every quarter, we have a meeting, we discuss each other. And Chief is also on that meeting and other director, and we take care of it. If anything concerned on that, that's my responsibility as a advisor to take that step to the council. And I know everybody concerned, I know there is some meeting missing, but I certainly will advise the committee member, if you are on that committee, please be on time or on that. Thank you. Any other council member want to add any comment on?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Tim, thank you for serving as the chair in that committee and being a part of it. Could you, could you read the first statement, the first sentence of the mission statement of the Safety Committee for me again? The purpose of it?
The Public Safety Committee advises the city council on public safety issues within the community.
All right, you can stop right there. My concern with the Public Safety Committee, which I used to be part of, I'll tell you is this, and this is no offense to anybody on there, but I take that sentence right there very seriously, and I do because I would say on an ongoing basis, I, about 50% of the things that I hear about from this community of concern that come to me, people texting me, emailing me, social media, whatever, are always safety concerns of some sort. And maybe they're not huge safety concerns, but they're important to these people that bring them forward. But yet, other than the annual report, I have yet to ever hear that I can remember the Safety Committee ever coming and saying, hey, this is something that's been of concern of ours, we would like to advise the city council on this, maybe you guys could consider policy change or something. I mean, even if it was just like, once in a while, come maybe do an update with us, just say, hey, here's some things I'm talking about. And I know you're the chiefs there and the fire chiefs there, and so you guys are passing information on there and they're taking care of it. But I read about a lot of things on you guys have been talking about your meetings, and I was like, those are great things. Like, that's good, you guys are talking about that. Oh, that's another thing, that's good you're talking about that. But up here, I mean, we don't know that you guys are talking about, we don't hear it. And I would just like to see this constructive criticism, I would love to see the committee be more proactive with the council and fill more of that role that you mentioned and say, and come and advise us. That's just one thing, and that's just constructive criticism I would love to see. I know that, Tim, you and I have talked in the past about maybe you as the chair could maybe give some homework to your members, saying like, hey, you know, I want you to bring back items. And maybe you guys do that, and your members bring back items, and then you make a agenda item. So maybe you do that, and if you do, that's great. And the second thing is that it's disappointing that half the meetings were canceled because we have people that don't show up. For those of you that serve on committees and commissions, if you can't make them, I understand once in a while, but seriously, like, this is a serious thing to join this commission. This is not just, oh, I'll show up whenever I can and I'll do it. Because if you can't do it, then just resign your seat and we'll get somebody else that can. I mean, public safety is important in this town, and the fact that half of our meetings were canceled because people couldn't make it is very disappointing. That's no, it's not your fault, it's not staff's fault, anybody's fault, it's the people that are serving, you know, not making the time for a commitment that they made. So, thank you for your, what you do, Tim. Thank you, Safety Committee, for what you guys do. Thank you, Mayor, for serving on that committee. But I just wanted to express that stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Thank you for your feedback, but we certainly will keep in mind, if anything necessary, we certainly are, I will push bringing to the city council. If no other council member any comment, I'm going to move to the next agenda item. Agenda item D, Madam Clerk may have a public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. First up, Sonia Shans.
This is my first time attending, and I am very upset at myself for saying that I've been a resident of Galt for 16 years, and this is the first time I've attended one of these meetings. So, Mayor, thank you, and council members. My concern is I am the resident that resides next to Walker Park. When the plan, the park was first planned, there was supposed to be a sound wall installed to give some privacy to the residents. Whoops, way back when, it wasn't such a big deal, but at the end of 2021, they added the driveway or the entrance to the park off of Sergeant, which has created absolutely no privacy for me and my family. People walk by all day long, they can see everything in my backyard. I have a swimming pool, I have young daughters that her friends come over. I don't feel comfortable with them out there swimming in their bikinis or their swimsuits, and I just wanted to know if there's been any update to whether or not there will be a sound wall or some kind of privacy given to my, my property. Also, when this was brought up and the residents were given the opportunity to present at the council member, I did come on on the Zoom, and I did have some concerns with the traffic off of Sergeant Avenue and the entrance and exit and the narrow road of Sergeant. It was proposed at that time, and it was said that there was going to be, that was only going to be emergency entrance and that there was going to be a barrier. Once the construction started on the road, that barrier was no longer put in. I don't recall an actual meeting that, where that was changed, but originally there was supposed to be, it was only supposed to be for emergency access. If you guys ever wanted to take a trip and go drive, you can see that there are skid marks all along the road right there. You know, we live in a small town, I understand that people like to go have fun, I get that. But, you know, it's, there's also been times where we've been out back and just walking around, and somebody's almost lost control of their vehicles and come onto my property. Again, just wanting to see if there's an update before I start investing my own money and putting in my own fence. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Thank you. Thank you for coming to make a comment, and I would like to have a public work director contact her to give her the information, you heard what they are concerned about. Thank you.
Ken Lee.
Hello, council members. My name is Ken Lee, I live at Galt Place. I'd like to bring up Jake at Denny's performed a medical emergency that, on his customer. He was trained by CERT, so he knew how to do a medical. I forget what it was, it was a CPR or a Hamlet maneuver. He is, he is also submitting an insurance claim again for his accident when he was driving into A Street at Denny's when he was hit head-on, because, you know, people thought it was a two-way streetway before they fixed it. The Commission and Agent also took medical emergency on our senior casino trip. Betty, Joanne, Oz, and Thudith. They basically took, took care of a senior who had a medical emergency getting on our bus. I think he was low on his diabetic. They made the decision to tell him he shouldn't be going to the casino with us. And so he ended up being taken away in an ambulance and staying in the hospital. The old Rite Aid, it was not being leased out yet. I still recommend a grocery outlet. I contacted the corporate headquarters to contact the city because it would benefit our tight budget. Also, a Planet Fitness would be nice there, because there's no gym in Galt that accepts the senior gym memberships, such as Active Fitness or the Silver Fitness Club. We have to go to Elk Grove or Lowdive, and we have a lot of seniors on Medi-Cal, Medicare, and we, we can't get to a gym. The veterans are asking for a memorial park, just like the one they have in Thornton. Basically, Thornton, we took over a street, basically, that was a turn lane into the housing project, and we built a park on top of it. And so now the county took over. And basically, even the Thornton gang leader, he took responsibility for the park. He weeded it, he raked the leaves, and did all that stuff for all the years. So it did build some, you know, understanding between the community and the people who lived there. But, you know, it'd be nice, because they list all the people who died and, you know, have passed away from World War II, the Korean War, Vietnam War. And so the only thing we have here is a rock over there on Fourth Street, Palmonad. They said there might be a memorial in the cemetery, but that's not publicly accessible all the time. So, you know, on the Palmonad would be nice for the kids to see it. Also, the Portuguese House opened again in Thornton. It's open for events after being closed for six years. They took care of the excessive noise nuisance that they had for over many, many years. And so basically, soundproofed it, and people don't get bothered by the music a mile away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you. Thank you. Next agenda item is a report by city council members or regional board, commission, and committee. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, it's been about a month since we've met, so I will try to keep it as brief as I can. On July 19th, I attended the California League of Cities SAC Valley Division Meeting in Elk Grove, where we toured Elk Grove and their Park and Recreation Facilities there at District 56. There was also an election for board members for next year, and those were seated. Martha Guerrero, I'm sorry. Yeah, Martha Guerrero is going to be the new chair for next year, and she's the mayor of West Sacramento. On the first, I attended Land Use and Natural Resources Committee meeting for SAACOG. We had an update on the transportation model for the blueprint, which will marry up with the housing model. And hopefully, by November, the blueprint will be adopted for the next five years. And then also attended a board meeting on the 15th for SAACOG, pretty much the same items as the Lunar Committee. And we also had a closed session for the executive director's performance evaluation. And then lastly, we, the mayor and I, attended the Kasuminas Community Service District two-by-two, and we had a healthy discussion on many topics, but the topic for, that I took away from a lot of information was telehealth update. And it was mentioned earlier today about telehealth, and it looks like it is going to be, it is district-wide now, it was a pilot for a couple of fire stations, and now it's district-wide program. And that's where a paramedic goes to a call for service, and if they deem that the person doesn't need to go to medical care immediately, they have the ability and some very small parameters to call a doctor on a tablet or an iPad or something like that and get medical treatment for the patient there without having to transport them. And they're using that about 100 times last year, just for two stations. And so you can imagine it'll probably go up to about 500 or 600 calls per year where an ambulance is not going to be required to go where otherwise they would. And so, looks like a really good program in place and that will free up medical units for certainly the Galt area from being away out of town in the event another emergency happens and there's a longer response time because of that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Papino.
On the 12th, we had the cast meeting, city manager and councilmember Farmer, the chief, I were there. And one big part of the discussion, the SRO program now having three police department members, including a sergeant, is well received by both districts, and they're very cooperative relationship with the start of the school year and traffic and all the things that always come, so that's, that's good to see. We covered a lot of other agenda items. I'm sure that Sean can probably get to some of those. One discussion that was started was the cooperative relationship between the school district and the city regarding the Winter Bird Festival. And if you've been around a while, you remember it used to be kind of a two-day thing that was a regional attraction. And not only did it have a big event at McCaffrey Middle School, they had, you know, tours that were regular going out into the area to the preserve and everything. And it was, you know, it was pretty neat. And so it kind of died off through COVID and is now like a half-day or one-day event. And the committee came to me and asked if we could look into ways to bring it back. And so we talked about it a little bit there. And the interim city manager is going to carry the ball forward, and we'll see where we end up hopefully bringing that back. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 5th, I attended my Galt Youth Commission Meeting. It's a good meeting. We had it across the way in Littleton Center. And we have a, a large group of fresh faces on the committee, and they seem excited about going out and making a splash in the community. And so it was a fairly short meeting, but looking forward to, to serving with those, the, all the new members on that. And then on August 12th, as Kevin, as Mr. Papano mentioned, we had our cast meeting. First time we were able to meet with the new high school superintendent and kind of, you know, getting familiar with her and, and her ideas and, and stuff. And I won't reiterate what Kevin mentioned about the SROs, which is really good. One other thing I would mention is that we did have a discussion about enrollment, which is a standing agenda item. We talk about school enrollment, and then we talk about development in town and how they affect each other and so on. And it was actually good news that the elementary district had a slight uptick. I think it was something like 12 students or something like that. 12 student pos, in the positive, which is good because it's been declining. So that was a little glimmer of hope that we might be turning a corner on that. And we did talk about a lot of stuff, but it was a good meeting, very long. But I thank you for the chief and thank you for interim city manager, Arias, for both attending. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Farmer. Councilmember Vandenberg?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Myself, I attended the two-by-two CSD meeting with the vice mayor Lozano, with chief and city manager. And vice mayor Lozano already mentioned what we discussed, but there is a two-topic, was in, belonged to Galt. One is telehealth, and the other is they expanding Station 46. But it would be a full disclose, will be a next coming meeting in, in the council meeting. And that's all. Thank you. Next agenda item is F, Information Consent Calendar. It is recommended that item 1 through 10 be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Any council member want to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to pull F3 and F5 just for a couple of brief questions real quick. F3, F5, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the item from 1 through 10 except F3 and F5.
Receiving file warrants for period ending August 8th, 2024, minutes of the regular meeting of July 16th, 2024, approval of a public improvement agreement and related bonds for the Liberty Ranch Phase 1 improvements, approval of final map and subdivision improvement agreement for Liberty Ranch Village 7, approval of final map and subdivision improvement agreement for Liberty Ranch Village 9, amendment number 1 to Task Order Number 2 with REY Engineers, Inc. for improvement plan review services for Liberty Ranch Phase 2 development, amendment number 1 to agreement for consultant services with Willdan Engineering, Inc. for project administration services for Liberty Ranch Development, and Meals on Wheels by Asian Community Center.
Thank you. Any public comment on these items?
No public comment.
Thank you. And I'm looking to approve the consent calendar except item number F3 and F5.
So moved.
Is moved by councilmember Vandenberg?
Second.
Second by councilmember Papano. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano? Councilmember Papano? Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Let's circle back to F3. F3, authorize award of master task order agreement for on-call consultant services. Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
First, my apologies to city manager and Mr. Griffin. I didn't have a, I was catching up on reading the rest of my packet this afternoon, and I didn't have a chance to reach out. I just wanted to get clarification, just to understand this. So I understand the on-call list. Basically, you have people you deal with on a regular basis, and instead of having to come back to it each time and go through the process or go through RFP to get these services, you want to be able to go to them, which I understand that. In the recommendation, it just says to renew, to re-up the list basically we already have. And then the second thing, to authorize consultants with existing task order agreements to be added. So my first question is just that I see the list. There's like five or six people on there. Obviously, names we recognize as we see in the warrants very often. Wood Rogers, you know, Somus, all these regular, right? There's like five names on there. So is these five names one that you're adding to the list? Or are these the five that we're re-upping, and then there's going to be additional you're adding?
You can cancel my reformer. So yes, it's, it's a little of both. What we have with the existing task orders, those contracts expire at the end of this month. And we have a number of active projects, plan checks, construction management and design services with these firms. And so we want to, because the contracts expire, but those projects are ongoing, and we'll continue to be moving forward. We wanted to make sure that, just for, just to clean the contracts up, or just add, making sure that all those firms who still have existing, who are working on existing projects, that their contracts will continue as well.
So we're just not, yeah, we don't want to say, hey, you're, we're in the middle of a project with you, but we got to find somebody new? Is that what you're getting? Okay. And the current, I don't know if it's the proper word is procurement, but the current policy states that anything over, is it 70? I think it was in staff report, 70,000, then it would need to come to council. So 70 below, right?
Yes. Anything below, you're directing, anything that's less than $70,000 is city manager has authorization to award. But from a consultant perspective, $70,000 doesn't purchase a, a design of a project. We might get, for example, a, like a pre-design report, which could then guide us to what happens for future steps. But any, pretty much any project that's in the budget will likely need to come to council for approval because that will exceed the city manager's authority.
Okay. I appreciate that. Because I think maybe the general public would think, you know, that we're not, we're just being taken out of the loop of approvals. And if you give, you're giving some perspective of what that dollar amount actually purchases and stuff, it's really not a lot in the, in the world of public, public works. So the only last question. So with, with this, with this on-call professional list to renew it, how often do we look at that list and go, okay, we're going to? Because I, I just, in this spirit of just not only free market, but just protecting taxpayer dollars, you know, going out, make sure we get the best deal, and we just don't, you know, like, there's no, I don't know, for lack of a better word, like the nepotism. We use the same people for 10 years, and we never go out to bid to see if there's a better company for a better price. How often do we typically look for different people? Like when we have a list, every couple of years, three years, four, what? Do you know?
So this last list was for a total length of five years. So the base contract is, is three years. And then it has the maximum of two one-year extensions. So this could be a, could be a minimum of three years or a maximum of five years.
Okay.
And a lot of times, for example, on larger projects that might have federal funding, this procurement, we cannot utilize this procurement for, for larger design projects that may have federal funding. So again, this goes, this list is, we, we can't use this list for every project. So there will be times where we actually, for any specific project, have to go out to the entire consult community and provide, offer, an opportunity to provide a proposal.
Okay. And I appreciate that. I know in the private sector, you know, you want to use people you're comfortable with. You have a good working relationship, and so that's just common. But with taxpayer money, obviously, we have to. So I thank you for those, answering those questions. I apologize I didn't hit you with that earlier today. So with that, I would move to approve item F3. Mr. Mayor?
Second?
Thank you. Is moved by the agenda item number F3, moved by councilmember Farmer, second by councilmember Vandenberg. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Papano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item is F5. Subject: Approval of Final Map Subdivision Improvement Agreement for Liberty Ranch Village 6 exempt for SEQA 15182. Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just, this particular item was, I have a general question that kind of relates to all those items. I just pulled this one because it was the simplest. I'm just trying to get clarification because I caught something here, and I just was trying to understand. So on this particular agenda item, the staff report begins by saying, the discussion in the staff report, and I'm on page 31 of the packet, page one of the staff report, if you guys want to follow along. But under the discussion paragraph, it basically just gives an overview of the project. Talks about, you know, how on September 12th of 2016, the city granted the developer rights to develop Liberty Ranch, et cetera, et cetera. And then on December 19th, 2023, the city approved the final subdivision map as we're doing for some of these other phases as well. But it refers to the project as approximately, it says approximately 1,393 residential area, residential units, elementary school, 44-point acres of open space, 16-point acres, blah, blah, blah. And it gives this whole overview, right? But then in all the other items for all the subdivisions approval, it actually is different. And it talks about 1,695 units. All the other numbers are relatively the same. 44.5 exactly the same, 16.2 exactly the same. So all of them are the same, but on one of them, it states 1,393 units as being what was approved in 2016. But then on all the other reports for the subdivision maps, it refers to the project as 1,695 units. I mean, it's 300, how, I'm just, I'm just confused because, you know, we didn't approve that project, but we are approving subdivision. I'm just, but there's conflicting information there. I'm just trying to figure out what, if it was like copy and pasted, but something changed between 16 and now? So you'll look at, so if you look at the discussion item on any of those others, you'll see how it's worded differently compared to this one item.
Good evening, mayor and fellow council members. And I don't want to speak for John, but if it is a typo, you probably have a number of different eyes miss that. And John, I'm not sure if that would have included the multifamily component, the two, and then one did not. But generally, you're not seeking like a mapping, you know, on a subdivision for the multifamily, really more just for the single-family lots.
Okay. And like I said, I'm just, just try, I just wanted to, like I said, when I see a difference in the, in the description and it varies, I just want to understand if that was a typo, or like you said, I did see the multifamily component in there? And so maybe that's the 300-unit discrepancy possibly?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, that answers that question for me. And then the last thing is, I just wanted to clarify for the public. There's a lot of talk about this project and how people are going to show up to council meetings, and we got to stop this project. And it's just people not understanding that the project was approved nearly seven years ago, or actually eight years ago. So at the bottom of the staff reports for all these subdivisions, the final maps that we are approving here tonight, typically on the staff report for you watching the public, it'll say, here's what we recommend you do, and then it'll say the alternatives are X. And so you can, it gives us options, what we can do. Here it says the alternatives. It says there are no alternatives. As state law, Subdivision Map Act requires approval of final map if it is subdivision, if it is substantially conformed with the original approved tentative map, so on and so forth, so whatever. So Mr. City Manager, can you just click, just give me, just in layman's terms, what does that mean?
Essentially, that a final map is just a routine process. And as long as the map, the final map meets all the conditions that were applied by council for the tentative portion, that there's no basis to deny the final map, and there's no decision. So in, in reality, a final map technically could be, depending upon on how your code is written, could be determined by a city engineer and not brought to council.
So basically, in a nutshell, I mean, this project obviously was approved in 2016, and that project, that's in stone, and these are just formalities that we're going through now.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you for that.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. That's, it is a formality, but only because everything was met. If there was a, that's, that's, this is an opportunity to correct that. No, correct. Well, if the conditions were not met, the city engineer would not have brought that forward. Right. So there's a checklist for making sure all the conditions of approval are met.
Okay. Thank you for those questions. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. With that, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve item F5.
Second?
Thank you. It's moved by councilmember Farmer, second by councilmember Vandenberg. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote on item F5?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Papano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item, regular calendar. Sorry about that. I missed, next agenda item G, schedule matter notes of public hearing. There is no public hearing. Thank you. Next agenda item H, regular calendar. There is no regular calendar. Thank you. The next agenda item, city council report. H1, city council public benefit funding. Ms. Hubert?
So the recommendation is to prove by motion allocating Vice Mayor Lozano's $1,000 allotted public benefit funds to the City of Galt Parks and Recreation Scholarship Program. The program guidelines were outlined in your staff report, and the funds were approved in the 2025-26 city council meeting of June 18th. And Vice Mayor Lozano, did you want to expand on that, or?
Yeah, just briefly. I won't go into my, my thought process of the policy in general. I did vote against it, but it's there. And I think that the money should go back into the general fund. We had a discussion at a couple of council meetings ago where there's a need in, in the Parks and Rec Department to help fund families who can't afford to play or take a class or any of that through the recreation program. And so I thought it was appropriate that the $1,000 that was allotted to my discretion go back to the general fund to help the youth in the community. And that's all.
Thank you. Any council member, any comment on this agenda item? If it's not any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
On second thought, quickly, this won't affect the next item in any way or vice versa? Okay, thanks. Just double-check it.
Thank you.
And you need a motion.
So I'm looking to motion to approve that this item H1.
Move to approve.
Is moved by councilmember Papano, second by councilmember Farmer. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Papano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer? Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Aye, motion passes by five to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item H2, park and recreation, youth sport fees. Mr. Salis, our?
It'll, it'll be a good start.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Council, good evening. Tonight, we'll be discussing youth sports fees. At the June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, council directed staff to evaluate the fees for the youth, the youth T-ball and basketball programs. And with, excuse me, and return with the revenue variance by continuing the current fee versus the proposed fee. Should you stay with the current fee and not raise it to the proposed fee, we, there would be an eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollar revenue, if you want to call it a lost or not collected. But I'm going to ask Monica Lopez, our recreation supervisor, to go over what goes into coming up with these costs.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this is basically explaining how we determine what each program costs depending on the number of participants and the expenditures. I'm not, I was doing both. So here is in the staff report, it shows the current rate for T-ball and all of our different levels of youth basketball. And then the second column shows the proposed rate that we could be raising the fees up to. So our revenue estimates, we use an average registration over the past three years to calculate how we consider, what we consider with each level. With the exception of if numbers are increasing to our maximum, we may just use the maximum. So first grade basketball has been close to maximum for the last two or three years. So we're using sixty as our number we base our fees on. That changes depending on the season and the age group. Fees analysis, we have the fee estimates which include personnel costs. So we have our onsite staff, the staff that's working directly with the youth. Our supervisory staff, who's myself and any of our recreation coordinator or recreation supervisor that's visiting the sites and the programs. And then we have the administrative staff who helps with registrations, putting things on the website, anything else behind the scenes. Our expenditures include things like equipment, the balls, the shirts, hats, first aid supplies, medals, trophies, any training, scorebooks, whistles, et cetera. And then it also includes our registration fee with active net, which is about approximately five percent of all the registrations collected. The last thing is the central services cost, and that is approximately twenty-three percent of the total personnel and expenses. And it's the allocated to support services, which is basically finance, city hall, any of, anything over here. Some of the personnel factors to consider with the different programs, our different hourly rates are estimated with the fully burdened rates, workers comp, FICA, et cetera, any benefits depending on the level of the position. And then we estimate the scheduled hours of work. So we go off of what we hope with our estimated number of participants, what we're going to need for practices, games, and things like that. For youth T-ball, we have our program, our site supervisor practices and games. Practice times are available three days a week at Veterans Field. We hope that we get enough volunteer coaches to sign up as coaches and they can sign up for multiple days with us asking that they do at least one practice per week with their team. If we do have to staff it, we allow our coaches to do one practice per week. Youth T-ball is an eight-game season, we try to do those on Saturday mornings. And if we have rain days or any kind of delays, we will throw in some evening games. As again, I, the goal is to have all teams can coach by volunteers and we may have to throw in staff. I think this last year, we had to do two or three staff for T-ball. And the year before was the only year we have ever not needed any staff to coach. Youth basketball program staffing, we have a supervisor present at all activities, visiting all the sites, the games, the practices, et cetera. Our first grade program is a fully staffed clinic with three, three staff members, which is eight Saturdays between nine to twelve at the Chabola Community Center. We have twenty per group to give our total of sixty. Second and third grade through seventh and eighth grade practices, those are offered four or five days a week, depending on the five different practice sites, which we have Chabola, and then we have five, the five, four to five, depending on the year, elementary and the middle school. Depending on the site is they give us four to five days. And if we don't need them, we will give up the site so other groups can use the sites for their activities. We allow each team to initially sign up for one to two practices, depending on the age group or the grade level. And then once everyone's had a chance to sign up, we will allow them to add more with the exception of our staff. They can only do one practice per week. For second through fourth grade basketball games, they have an eighth grade, eight-game season. We don't have any scores or standings for them. And we will have two officials or two staff members, one official, one timer. This year, we're adding that one official for second and third grade because, believe it or not, that was our group that had the most conflicts and most arguments with parents. So we are adding an official for second and third grade for the first time ever this year. Again, our goal is to have all the teams coached by volunteers, but we will bring in staff as needed. And then the fifth and eighth grade through eighth grade, the difference is they have an eighth grade season and they will have playoffs with all teams participating. We do do three staff members during those games, scoreboard and the book, and then two officials for the games. And again, we prefer to have volunteer coaches or encourage volunteer coaches, but we will staff it if we need to. So our hard costs versus total costs, when you're looking at the, the Excel sheets, explain, giving the different costs. Our hard costs include all of the personnel and expenditure. And then if you look at total costs, we add in the central service costs to the hard costs. And this shows one of our seventh and eighth grade basketball, and it shows you how we look at the different workers, the number of hours they're working per week, their fully burdened rate. You're looking at the, the tryouts and the draft staff, our sports coordinators, our office staff. And then you come down to how many games we're offering per season. If you look at the registration for seventh and eighth grade, boys and girls, we have had to combine them the last few years. We had forty-seven participants, which is our average for the last three. And then if you look down below, you have your different expenses that would fall into that to help us make our decision. And that is the last slide. Are there any questions on the fees?
If I may just add a couple more other things. Council also made some comments about one day possibly these programs being free. Should you make T-ball and first grade program free, that'd be a total cost of nearly twenty-one thousand dollars. And one of the other options you could consider is placing a percentage of costs to all programs. Eighty percent of all hard costs, seventy-five percent of all hard costs. And then we would apply that to all the programs, just another option if you would like to consider that. And then we're able to take any questions if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lopez, and thank you, Mr. Salis, give us a report. Any council member want to, any comment on this agenda item?
Yeah, I just have a question for clarification. I'll get to my comments after we hear a public comment. But just so I make sure I heard this right, so youth that sign up for a recreational sport, should there be a volunteer coach, which is likely a parent or a guardian or something like that helping out, they're insured two practices or offered two practices a week? And those who don't have a volunteer coach, who have a staff member, are offered one practice a week? Did I hear that right?
They, the volunteer coach can practice up to two times per week.
Okay.
If it's coached by a city personnel, we will offer one practice per week.
Okay, so I think that's what I just said. Did you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
They don't have to do two practices as a volunteer, but they can do up to two practices.
Right, that's why, that's why in my question, I said they're offered two practices. Staff members are offered, kids that are on staff member teams are offered one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member?
I too, well, I just had a question and then I'll save my comments till after a public comment. You mentioned the, the, you know, hypothetical scenario in the future of, you know, you've mentioned the cost of doing the T-ball and the first grade basketball. And then you mentioned or an eighty percent recovery. So the eighty percent recovery would be different than right now, which is, we try to do a hundred percent recovery, is that what we do now?
No, we, we don't come close to a hundred percent recovery in our program.
So then, so then saying hypothetically, we could do, look at something like an eight percent recovery, how, what's, what is, how is that different than what we're doing now? What's, what are we doing now?
Right now, we evaluate each fee, look at what we're raising it by, what the costs are. And basically, it's just a determination by the department, the two of us consulting each other. You know, we can't recoup a hundred and sixty dollars for a hundred and twenty dollar program that we're charging.
Yeah, I mean, I just asked because it's like if we said, yeah, that sounds great, let's move towards doing, setting a policy to recover eighty percent and come to find out the fees don't change because we were only recovering eighty percent to start with, then that doesn't really do anything. Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's just an option for you to just say, that way there is no questioning why we're coming with you with the rate for the approval.
That's all I have for the moment, thank you.
I'd like to add a little perspective. If you'd like to speak, you can need to put in a card, but we appreciate everything you might have to say. So on our public pool, that's, you know, just as equally public and used, how much money does the city lose per year on that item? Mr. Boring's not here. You, you replied to my question and I believe you mentioned like three hundred thousand, which is way above what I thought it was. And I actually don't need a hard number. I know it used to be over eighty thousand, but also the same thing is true right now. We are losing money for the Saturday market on the uptown or downtown. And that was roughly eighty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars last year, if I remember correctly as well. So I don't think it necessarily would be wise to make this program completely free. I think you might get flooded by outside kids, which is not totally bad, but it would overwhelm us, I think. At the, at the same rate, I, I think it's good to help out where we can. And that's what we're doing with taking a loss at the pool and taking a loss at the Saturday market. Those are great things for the community. We've heard nothing but excellent feedback from the market. You know, if we went solely by making, making money off of taxpayer money, I don't think we'd be doing a very good job. So if we, I kind of like what you said about percentage-wise, what if, if we were like fifty percent recovery, what would be the total loss? Twenty, thirty thousand? Just, just a rough number, I realize that would be hard to calculate based on, on what you're doing, but.
So for the T-ball program, fifty percent of total cost, it's a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, so fifty percent of that.
Okay, what's the total number of kids roughly that, that participate?
T-ball this year were about a hundred and thirty. We could do potentially two hundred kids if it were ten divi- ten groups for boys and ten groups for girls. And that's basically what would need to be with basketball as well, or location and availability of practices and things like that.
Okay, and that's all, I just, I guess I went as far as I went to at this point, and I'll let my fellow council members chat.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one, two follow-up things. One, I think what I was getting at is exactly what council member Farmer asked. And at some point in the near future, like within the week, I'd like to know what our cost, what our cost recovery is on parks and rec programs for youth, whether it be recreation or any other, what that, what that number is. And as hard of a number as we can get. And then also, I, I guess the conversation for me at least has brought up a lot more, many, many more questions in terms of equity and things like that. And so if it's okay, I'd like to meet with the city manager on that in, in the next week and start to nail some of that down. And some of the concerns I have are the opportunities of somebody signing up, why they have different opportunities for practice. And then the other piece is why we're not taking as many kids in regardless of whether they're male or female and creating teams. And so if, if we have enough for twenty-five boy teams and fifteen girl teams, are we taking all of those? And how many are we putting on a waitlist? How many are returning away? All of those things. And I'll just end with this. I think this discussion tonight should be predicated by the, the notion or the knowledge that we are in the middle of a parks master plan process that I think will start to begin to answer some of these questions. And I think could better direct us in terms of fees and things like that moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, and I think that's an appropriate comment, Councilman Lozano, and I'd be glad to meet with you, you know, at a mutual convenient time and talk about the issue. And one of the other options the council has is in light of, you know, we're working through a master plan, you know, we're working on coming through with more numbers, you know, just keep the youth fees as they are. I mean, we know we're at not, we're not at cost recovery, and that's okay. You know, I think, you know, there's been an impact on citizens already for rising costs, you know, they just approved Measure Q. So perhaps, you know, at this point, an option the council considers is just keep the fees as they are rather than trying to determine what percentage we are at cost recovery. At least in that manner, there won't be an increase in fees for residents.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I would like to get the public comment.
Tim Reed?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, other council members, and everyone else. I came up here and the city manager kind of stole my thunder, but it's all right, I won't hold it against him. I, I'm asking you guys not to raise the fees. It's eleven thousand dollars, let's hold off on raising the fees and see if we can't find that money somewhere else. The reason I say that is because I've been one of those volunteer coaches on both the T-ball and the basketball, right? First of all, this, the city, they do an amazing job at the, at these two programs. I couldn't ask for anything more from them in either one of these programs. However, on the other side, you have families that are having a hard time putting food on our table with the rising costs of everything else. And some of these kids, these sports are all that they have, right? And if you, and if we raise these fees, and I didn't have time enough to write down the, the raise of each one of those fees, but it looked like it was big enough for me, for some of these parents not to be able to afford it. And some of these kids come with rundown tennis shoes and other things because they just can't afford it. And raising these fees is going to make it harder for them to do some of the things that they love. Some of the kids I coached in basketball, they love basketball, they strive to be an NBA basketball player. But if we up these fees to the point that their parents can't afford to have them in these programs, we're doing them a disservice. The second thing I wanted to bring up was the combining of the, like Vice Mayor Lozano said, the combining of the boys and the girls into older ages, that's not just a city problem. That's seen in county, in county line soccer and all these other sports. Because as they get older, these kids now go play for the junior high and the high school. And they just can't balance playing for the city and these other places at the same time. So unfortunately, there's less of an enrollment for those older aged children. And I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chris Brosman?
I too would urge that we keep fees the same. The one that really concerns me is the central service cost, to be honest with you, of twenty-three percent. I've never really. I've never really drilled them to that, but, so parents are paying 23% of central services, or every dollar they give, 23% is going to central services. Most businesses, we look to keep our cost of labor 20 to 30% total. But in the city of Galt, we elect to tax basically our school programs or our Parks and Rec program 23%. So we give them back a dollar, but then we take back 23 cents of it to run the rest of the world, right? Again, as a business model in the civilian world, good luck with that because that's never going to fly. I'm curious too, you know, so to me, it concerns me that parents, so they give a dollar and they give up 23 cents to keeping this fine building and all the people that work in it. Does everybody else in the city pay 23% to central services? Does every department that we have in the city of Galt pay 23%? I don't know the answer to that. I'm sure that there's smart people in this room that do. But I've always been amazed at 23% because to be frank with you, I'm sure we could find someone out there that would do it for 10. Do payroll, through a payroll company. Now, I'm not saying that I don't appreciate the people that work for the city of Galt because I do. But to me, 23% is a huge number, guys, when you look at it, whether it's going to the police budget, or whether they're paying 23%, whether there is going to any department and they're paying 23% to keep people answering the phones, HR, et cetera. That's, that's a huge number. Again, I'll wrap up with I'd urge to keep the fees the same. I think the economy's been hit. I'd like to keep it where it's very affordable for people to participate. I'd like to hear the 200 number coming out to T-ball instead of 130. And lastly, Mr. Lozano, I was sitting in the crowd and I probably can't point you out, but I'm going to point you out. I remembered that you hadn't wanted to do that thousand, and I was kind of curious to see your thousand. And I have to say, I'm appreciative of what you did with your thousand and funding kids that can't afford to do it because none of us want to see our kids not be able to play baseball, basketball, whatever the sport may be. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Ellis Johnson.
Thank you very much. My, the first part of my question is regarding volunteer coaching. There's two key words there. As a volunteer, how are they covered if something happens to them or someone on the team as a coach? The second part is insurance-wise, what happens? Because you got two words there that kind of conflict with each other. So that's my questions for the safety of everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Ken Lee.
Hello, I'm Ken Lee. Basically, in Free Market, California, a lot of these organizations and kids opportunities like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and all these, you know, kid places, they allow them to have booths at their festivals to self-fund, you know? We have a flea market, we have the Saturday market, and they have empty spaces. Maybe these, you can have them self-fund by selling reusable canvas bags for shopping at places to, you know, get money, candy, like other organizations do. That way, you know, it helps cut the cost down, and they appreciate it more earning their own money. You know, they help offset the cost too. Whether or not you raise it or don't raise it, it gives them an opportunity because we have, you know, the flea market and the Fourth Street Palmonad. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more public comment.
Thank you. Before I go to the other council member, I just want to be a little bit more clarification from Mr. Selys on the current rate and proposed rate. That's why I think last time, you know, a council asked you not to increase the rate as a proposed rate because everybody know it's the economy, and we just passed the Measure Q, and the same citizen, that's their kids and grad kids. And I also see that we're going to, same rate, we're going to lose a little bit money. And can you might be explain how much we can lose if we keep the same rate? This is for one year or two year?
This is for next season, which would be in March of 2025. Should council decide not to raise the rates to the proposed amounts, the revenue, if you want to consider it a loss, would be 11,726 as an estimate.
This is one season, right?
Yes. And again, those are estimated numbers based on registrations over a three-year average.
All right. Thank you. And now I can move to the other council member. Any comment, any direction we're going to give to the staff?
If I could, Mr. Mayor. So first, I just want to touch on for the public that heard Mr. Brosman's comment, not to go into long conversation, but just really quick, central service costs, let me give the market, for example. The flea market conducts businesses, it has its own expenses, which pays for itself. But there's the things outside the market, such as the city attorney or payroll, HR, the city manager, so on and so forth, that do, or even public works providing work for the market. Those services are provided, reimbursed through essential service costs. What's called cost allocation, we used to do what was called direct allocation, where it's like, you know, the city attorney drafted up a new contract for Parks and Recreation that says this is what, you know, the legalities of certain, you know, whatever. Then they would bill those hours. That would be like, so they would exactly bill that stuff, and then we could compensate. But at some point, the city or the council or whoever the powers that be decided that it was just too cumbersome or too, too much time-consuming to do direct allocation. So they come up with a formula, you know, probably did some advanced math of some sort, and came up with 23%. And they feel like that is the appropriate number to bill, so all the departments do pay 23%. I'm not saying I agree with it at all. Believe me, I dove deep into this, really deep into this with the market years ago, but I'm just explaining what cost, what, what cost allocation is in 23%. So with that aside, talking about the fee structure here, um, you know, I too was a coach, and I remember having kids that I coached with, with girls softball. I did minis, minors, you know, those ages. And I remember having kids that I would, you know, have to wait, like the one kid, I'm like waiting like a half hour after practice because, you know, Uncle Johnny's coming to pick up, because mom's working two jobs, one of them at Carl's Jr., the drive-through, and the other one's whatever, just so her kid can play sports. And I knew some of these kids are never going to play sports outside of Parks and Rec. They're not going to go, they're not going to make the team in high school. They're just not really athletic people. But this was the one opportunity that the parents wanted to get them into sports. Some of these fees is a 30% increase. Now, I was happy to hear that we had 100 or whatever the number was, or more, 200 kids. I'm thinking of that, 200 kids, that is such a great, you know, thing that we can get that many kids into, you know, especially T-ball, which is, you're just starting out. But we don't really know if that would drop with a 30% jump. We don't know. Maybe we only lose five, 10 kids, maybe we lose 50 kids. But to me, losing five kids would be a tragedy because my dad used to always say to me that an idle mind creates trouble, and these, getting a kid into sports is sometimes the only thing that the parents could do to get these kids into something, teach them, you know, teamwork and, and competitiveness and all the things that we all know that sports do. And so for us to ensure that those kids can remain in these programs, and these are not the kids that can afford it, let's be honest. I got girls that played travel ball, and they get the $200 bats and the, you know, $150 cleats. These are not these kids. As Tim, as Mr. Reed mentioned, these are the kids that are just struggling to even have. And when you got two or three kids, now you're talking about another $100 on top because it's not just one kid. So for me, I do like the idea of freezing the fees and keeping them, I think with the passage, passage of Measure Q, and that being, you know, trying to improve the quality of life in Parks and Recreation, I think that's the least we could do is to keep those fees frozen for the time being. I would love to see us come back when we do budget, maybe mid-year or something, with what it would look like to do the T-ball and the basketball, those entry level, and maybe we can find where we can do the 20,000. I want to be honest with you, I could find that 20,000 so easily. I probably saved the city like a million dollars with, in the last six years, just, you know, pushing for like an outbid for this project or this or that. I mean, I have a tally at home, I can tell you. So 20,000 is nothing. I think we should look at it seriously. I, we got a new council coming on, maybe those new council members will feel differently. Maybe we could, you know, let them settle in and they can help make that decision. But I would love to see us move towards something like that. I understand, we, you know, we're not in the business of losing money. But this is a community value. It's not about money. It's not about, you know, a dollar value. It's about a community value. Mr. Vandenberg mentioned the Saturday market, you know, that is a community value, that market. It might lose money right now, but it has community value, and that's why we do it. We don't do it because we're making money on it. Somebody said to me recently, I can't remember if it was the city manager or Mr. Selys, but they said to me, well, you know, we're still charging less than Elk Grove, or we're charging less, whatever. You know, the great thing about what we can do in Galt, especially with Measure Q, is we don't have to follow other people's example. We can be the people that set the example. And if we could be the first town to offer free sports at the, you know, T-ball level, wouldn't that be great? We could do that. So I would support keeping the fees frozen right now until we can later make an assessment of that, and maybe we can look at covering that 20,000 out of Measure Q. But that's what I have to say about this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member, any comment?
Yeah. So I arrived at the same conclusion as has been stated by most every speaker so far of leaving the fees where they are. And here's where I got there. First off, I don't think any of these should be free, period. These do have value to us, to the families, and there's a demonstration of that, that people are willing to, to have a little bit of skin in the game, have a commitment to it. I do remember being told, I paid for this season, you're going to finish it. And there's something to that. So, so I don't want to make it free at any level. People don't appreciate free stuff. On the other end, I don't want to ask for any more money right now because, as has been stated, we're on the heels of Measure Q, and we've got something to prove, that we are going to do what we promised with that. Has not been done yet. So I don't, I'm not comfortable asking for anything more. When people come back and they see pristine ballparks and facilities that are completely upgraded, okay, then maybe. I can see asking for a few more bucks to be able to play in facilities like that. But for now, I think leaving them where they are is, is the best answer.
Thank you. I will, thinking the same thing, I will consensus with all the other council member. At this time, leave the fees like don't propose, but in near future, we certainly will see how we can do it because same thing Vice Mayor Lozano said, his master plan, plan coming in for the Walker Park. At this time, I'm also, you know, follow these other council member, don't we increase any fees? So Mr. Selys, you might have enough direction from the council members?
I have direction.
Thank you. Next agenda item is Police Department, H3, Subject Office of Traffic Safety Grant 2024 Award Acceptance. Mr. Kolenowski.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is for you. We have a tentative approval from the Office of Traffic Safety in the amount of $65,000 effective on October 1st, 2024, running through September 30th, 2025. Our attempt to get you this information early and accept the award allows us to plan for a litany of work that we're going to be required to perform under this grant award. And those, some of those highlights, I know some of these topics we've discussed in the past about traffic enforcement and the things that we do as an organization. This will allow us to do two formal DUI checkpoints inside the community of Galt along with eight saturation patrols during the year. We will also allow us to have, looks like eight directed traffic enforcement operations, and then two traffic educational outreach presentations. Allows for some training for staff, some supplies for the DUI checkpoint, and software for the drones for collision diagramming purposes. So that's the sum total of the work that'll be performed under this grant. And I think if you remember back, I don't know, a month or two ago, we brought you one that had, was through the cannabis grant, and that has additional eight saturation patrols related to impaired driving. So during the next year, there's going to be a litany of activity and staff's gearing up to tackle those moving forward. So this is before you, for your consideration, authorizing the $65,000 to be received and reallocated, and the bulkhead of that is for the overtime and training and the equipment that I talked about with the drone program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment?
I just want to say, Chief, thank you. I just want you to pass on to the department, and I know Officer Little's sitting up there too. You know, the phenomenal work you guys do with, with DUI enforcement. I know it's really, I feel like for a small town, we have a lot of it. I don't know if it's like people just think, you know, well, I only live like right over there, I can see my house, so I'm just going to drive home. You know, I don't know if it's, that's the reason people tend to drink and drive more or, or what it is. There's nothing else to do but go drink. I, I don't know. But we have a lot of them, as you know. You know, I remember at our, at your award ceremonies for PD, you know, there's a lot of awards being given out for a lot of arrests. I, I mean, we'll never know how many lives you've, you know, the officers have really saved. It's not a number you'll ever be able to know what it is, but I'm sure there's, there's lives saved and, and you know, we all know what happened to like, you know, the young girl Angel Rendaria here in town. It's just a heartbreaking thing to see that. And so I'm glad you guys got this money. I'm glad you guys are ramping that up, and like, I mean, the biggest hammer you can drop on these people is still not big enough. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member? If not, any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
There's no public comment, then I'm looking to prove that item H3 may have a motion to approve?
Oh, moved.
Is moved by Councilmember Vandenberg, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Madam Clerk, may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano, Councilmember Papino, Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Next agenda item, aye, communication. City Clerk?
None.
Thank you. Next agenda item, comment by staff. Armando Selys.
I'm Mayor and City Council. I'd like to make you aware of our first Park Master Plan meeting. Our community workshop will be held next Tuesday, August 27, 8:30 PM, 8:30 PM at the Littleton Community Center. This will be the first of many meetings. They will also be meeting with our nonprofits, our stakeholders, city council, and our youth groups in September. So you'll be getting contacted regarding making an appointment for that. And our community, excuse me, our Core Aquatic Center will be closing September 2nd for the season, and I'd like to thank all my staff at the market, recreation, and the Parks Landscape people for all the hard work they've been doing the last 30 days.
Mr. Griffin?
As councilors aware, we have restarted construction on the C Street project, and with any project of this magnitude with traffic control, we always appreciate residents' feedback when they see issues or things that aren't very clear. So we are. So we are receiving comments and feedback from the public and addressing those with the contractor.
Chief Kalanowski?
Two quick items this evening. First, a reminder that next Monday at noon, we'll be doing the wreathling for Officer Graywall's third anniversary of his passing, and it'll be about a fifteen or twenty-minute event. After that, we're going up to the artist's studio to look at the final, I guess, rendering. I probably don't have the word right, but that's the way I hear it, for his bust that they're doing, which is on track to go to the next location to get it done in October. They hope to have it completed and finished by February. And then the second piece is on September 7th, which is the Market, or no, excuse me, not the Market, the Saturday Market. We will be participating as part of the Galt Public Safety Day, so we'll be out there with different activities and events for the community during that event. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
And no more comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next agenda item is comments by City Councilmember and future agenda item. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank staff for the reports today, they were certainly enlightening, and hope to continue down the road of gathering information on, on what the final numbers look like. And certainly, thank you, Chief, and Police Department for the work on DUIs, and that's, I think, just giving the officers another set of tools to do their job is excellent. So just some other items that had my attention the last month or so. I did attend with Mr. Lee, the Thornton Veterans Memorial Park dedication, it was really good. They've done a good job with that corner, if you guys get a chance, go down and see it, it's, it's absolutely amazing. And, and I hope that we could do something to complement what we already do in our community for the veterans in terms of a memorial. Couple of other things, I attended and hosted Vice Mayor's Sacramento County Lunch here on the 22nd of July, and it was attended lightly, a lot of people were on vacation, but they had a chance to visit our downtown area and had some good lunch, as well as Spahn's cookies for dessert. And so we just highlighted what Galt is about and, and what we had to offer here. So hopefully we'll see a few of them at the Market on this next September, Saturday. Tended the Parlin Oaks groundbreaking and grand opening of their models, and if you have a chance, go look through the models, it's quite interesting. Apparently there's a market for it because they had seven sold the day that I went, which was the first day they opened, and, and so very nice, I think, addition to our community. And then also attended the National Night Out Celebration a couple of weeks ago. It was very well attended, I was surprised of the, not surprised with the turnout, but surprised at the turnout difference compared to last year, and so I think it was, it was very well attended. I would just, I have a couple of items that I asked the council for consideration to bring back at a future meeting. The first one is to ask the city manager and city attorney to give us some direction on this. I feel pretty strongly about the feedback I've received in the community on Proposition 36, and I would, I would like to bring back a resolution, if legally possible, to support that proposition for this November. I think it is going to make big strides in combating some of our retail theft as well as fentanyl issues that we're having in our community, and, and begin to change some of the things that Proposition 47 from 2014 imposed on us locally, and so I would ask for support for that.
I would support that likewise.
Mr. Vice Mayor, not to interrupt and lack decorum, but California Police Chiefs has sent a draft resolution that I need to bring to you under, on that very same topic. So I had that queued up, and I apologize not mentioning it earlier.
Okay. Well, maybe we can do something concurrently with that as well. I appreciate the support on that. And then last thing is, I would like to see if we can bring a key to the city resolution forward to the council to be presented to Don Natoli for his public service in the community, not only on the elementary school board here, as well as the city council, and also as our longtime county supervisor. I think it's most appropriate, and when I brought the idea to the council, he was one of the people I had in mind, and so I think it'd be appropriate to bring that back and honor him with a key to the city.
No objection?
Thank you. Councilmember Papino.
Yeah, like Rich said, great job on National Night Out. I was also pleasantly surprised with the uptick in turnout and the uptick in food that was there, it was really good. Understand there might have been a little arm twist and done by some people in the department, but it worked, it was great. And then the other thing, hate to be unoriginal, but I also was not a fan of the discretionary thousand dollars, so I want to steal Rich's idea, and at the next meeting, if we could have on the agenda, to put mine toward the youth sports scholarships as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too attended National Night Out, it was very well done. I always appreciate all the hard work that goes in. I know our new CSOs are getting their feet wet on that and, and, but I think for their first one, I think it went really well. I won a television at the first park, which I actually gave away to someone, but it was so funny, I was running late, jumped in the car, wife says, what took you so long? I was, the TV. She goes, you didn't win the TV. I go, yeah, I did. Anyways, but some lucky person got a TV. But anyways, National Night was great. Pass, please pass on, you know, our gratitude to those involved. I also attended the Junior Warriors ribbon cutting at the Galt High Stadium. Very nice to see that program come back after several years of being gone. It's a feeder program for the high school, and a lot of parents, a lot of dads stepped up to be coaches, and I was surprised that what I saw there, that was, actually was bringing it back for the first time, which was over years, I thought it was an ongoing program based on what I saw, I couldn't believe it. It was very well attended, had a lot of fun out there, so congratulations and thanks to them. So that's the fun stuff. Then I'm gonna go on to like the downer stuff. So first of all, I want to say thank you to city manager and Ms. Mendez, who's not here tonight, for being very receptive to me basically blowing your guys' phones up all the time and coming into City Hall to talk to you about C Street construction stuff. I am probably indebted with at least ten text messages or emails, people walking into my place of business every single day, multiple people complaining about things with the project. I don't just come to you guys with stuff, I actually will go out and look at those complaints for myself to see if the people are just being very dramatic, or if it's something that I think needs to be brought forward. And so when I bring you something, I vetted those things. So, but, and this probably goes without saying, I know Amy just responded to an email earlier saying that she has still yet to work with Trang on some signage, things that need to be adjusted. That's one of the biggest things I'm seeing, primarily the signage right here at Civic. Before I came to council meeting tonight, I actually kind of parked for a few minutes. And what I noticed is, when people are coming down the hill, what happens is you have a left turn lane to go to City Hall, and you have a right turn lane going into the plaza. But there's really nothing that indicates that people can go straight, but they have to do that jog. So I saw zero cars going straight, people don't even realize you can go straight. So having that westbound lane going from basically F and M down is almost pointless because nobody's using it, because you don't realize you can do that because of the jog, plus there's no signage. So that's the one thing I see the biggest, and if you're coming out of the plaza, like from Taco Bell with your, on your left, you think you can only go straight, you don't realize you can go forward and then turn and go westbound. And I know I've shared this with Chris already, but that's the most important piece of signage that I can see that needs to be remedied quickly. It's pretty self-explanatory, if you go out and watch it. I received an email from Mr. Harding this morning, he's a Galt citizen. I did pass it on to staff, and I'm not gonna read that verbatim, but essentially, Mr. Harding was expressing his concern with the fact that we're all under a big time curtschere on this, and you know, we have a lot of businesses that are, you know, gonna try to rough it through this project, which is gonna be a lengthy one. And his concern was the lack of seeing actually any activity going on. He's saying, you know, goes out there in the morning, and there's maybe two or three people doing anything, and there just doesn't seem to be very much like movement happening and a lot of things happening. Now, I'm not a construction manager, and I'm not out there, I don't know what they're doing and not doing, I'm simply passing along with the optics, and he's not the only one who's said this. So I just, you know, every day for these businesses, they have to go through this, is one more day of business that they could be impacted. And no matter what we do for them, and I know we are working our butts off for these businesses, and I appreciate, pass this along to Trang and everybody else, that when we have had issues come from a business, where there was an issue or concern, it has been addressed immediately, and I really appreciate, because as you know, that is like a top priority for us, and not just me, I think the entire council is, we want these businesses, because we don't want to recreate a Lincoln Way disaster, which I've been hearing that a lot too. This isn't gonna be like Lincoln Way, and so I appreciate that, you know, remediating those quick. And so, but even with that said, even with those accommodations we're doing, there still is gonna be some impact. We just know there's going to be. And so every single day this project goes on, and God forbid it runs over a schedule, it's gonna be another day, another dollar lost. And I cannot stress enough how important that is to make sure that we are moving this thing along, you know, as timely as possible. So I know this is, I'm not trying to beat up on anybody, I'm just simply passing along because I'm seriously getting fatigued from hearing about it all the time. I just ask the public to be patient, it's construction, and what I've been telling people is you have to break eggs to make an omelet. So hopefully it'll pass quickly, we'll get through it. But thank you, everybody, for what you're doing and being receptive to citizens' concerns. So I think that's all I have for tonight, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor Sandu. Thank you to all the public comment, even though it wasn't that personally difficult, I really appreciate public comment. It's the only time people get the opportunity to speak to everybody in this city at all at one time, and there's no escape. As far as the C Street Project, I'm really thankful that the city's trying to be as flexible as possible and address things in a timely manner. I personally came up alongside Printing Kings just to see how it would go, and there was an officer sitting there making sure that people were doing the right thing. Someone did actually go down the street the wrong way from Lincoln Way, but I guess some of that's to be expected. I personally didn't have too much trouble with it, I just had to stop and think about the street layout and go around, so it was good. I guess personally anticipated those kinds of starting troubles or whatever, but I think things are fine, and it's a much-needed project. I don't think it'll be anything like Lincoln Way, so I'm looking forward to the finish. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Myself, thank you for the staff. I know there is not that many item on the agenda, but there's a lot of item was on a consent calendar, especially, and there's a big report. Thank you for the staff for give us all these report. Public Work Department, thank you for your, because C Street Project is very highlighted, and you guys taking care of that. I get a citizen approach to me, but I talk to city manager staff, they get a good feedback to the citizen. And I also like to thank you for the public comment. There is a lot of citizen came to this meeting for the public comment, and all these public comment is very important to me, myself, and all the councils. Thank you for all these public comment. And I also attended that National Night Out there, and this is my very favorite community event, and it was a great turnaround, like always. It is a great, lot of people, new people or familiar citizen, we met out there during our National Night. And I also like to thank you Police Department for this event, also like to thank you for the volunteers, thank you for the CSD, and also thank you for the donators who gave us a donation to make this event success. And that's all from me tonight. If anybody have a question or concern, if is not, then I'm going to adjourn that meeting 7:46. Thank you.